I'd like to call to order the May 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the Harris County Board of Education. At this time, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That will take us to Item C that the Harris County Board of Education review and approve the May 11th, 2023 monthly regular meeting agenda as presented. Do I have a motion? Mr. Proctor, seconded by Mr. Green, any discussion? All in favor? That will take us to Item D that the Harris County Board of Education recognize the academic achievements of the Harris County Carver Middle School and Harris County High School. Mr. Couch.
Let's see, Ms. Taylor.
First is going to be our Governor's Honors Program finalists, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. That'll be Lenny Schneider. Can't read or see. I'm sorry.
Good morning, good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. So we have several people who are going to come up and talk about our wonderful students, but I just want you to take a moment to look at so many students here and so many more that we could bring as well. But we are very proud of their accomplishments and it is fun for us and it's a little moment for them to be able to stand before you and show off the wonderful things that they are doing because of the teachers and the club sponsors that have been working with them to be able to help them do that. So at this time, Ms. Bailey, our senior counselor is going to come up and talk about our Governor's Honors students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I start, I do want to make sure that everyone understands what Governor's Honors is so that you know what a big deal it is because a lot of people don't really realize what it is. But it's the most prestigious academic recognition that we have in the state of Georgia. And anybody who's chosen for Governor's Honors, it's a really big deal. A Governor's Honor student is not just an all-around exceptional student, but within a particular subject, they are beyond extraordinary. And not, I, one of the questions that they have to answer in my interview is, why should I be chosen for Governor's Honors? And the answer, oh, I want to make As in my subject, is not enough, okay? Because everybody who is a nominee can say, I make As in my subject. But you have to be crazy about this subject where you do things in this subject beyond the eight to three school day. And these two, and one of them couldn't be here, are exactly that. This year, there were over 4,000 people, children nominated, and only 300 and something were chosen. So it's a very big deal. We had three children, three students make it to the finalists this year. In my, I don't think we've ever had three. Three is a lot. I'm not sure that we've ever had three, at least not since I've been doing it. The first one I want to recognize is Nadia Williams. Nadia is going in the area of communicative arts, which is a fancy way of saying English. And Nadia is outstanding in this subject. Not only does she make As, but she reads Edgar Allan Poe in her spare time for fun because that's the kind of stuff that GHP kids do. But Nadia is our first one, so please congratulate Nadia for me. All right, and this gentleman is crazy about math, okay? Not just an outstanding math student, but he does it for fun. He does calculus for fun. And in the fall, when his, one of his teachers was out for somewhat of an extended time, I asked several of the students, you know, how are you passing this class? What are you doing? Oh, we've got it. Connor's teaching us. It's okay, Connor's teaching us. That's the kind of stuff he does. But going in the area of math, and he's only in the 10th grade. So just going to GHP is a huge deal, but going as a 10th grader is extraordinary. But this is Connor Archilla. And I have one more that could not be here because unfortunate, she wanted to be so badly, but she went home very sick today. And so she sends her regrets, but that is Asia Trippett, and she is going in the area of music. So congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. If you guys don't know, I'm Valerie Longshore Sargent. I teach theater here at the high school. Two big events that we have outside of our productions, one being the one-act play competition. We wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that Hunter Filling Jim, Senior Hunter Filling Jim, was recognized as the best actor in the region this year for his performance in Peter and the Star Catcher. The other big event that we attend is the Georgia Thespian Conference. Some people get the misconception because it's right down the road. It's in Columbus. Georgia hosts the second-largest Thespian Conference in the nation. And Columbus loves it because they make over a million dollars in revenue. But anyhow, so for some of the things that I'm about to mention, over 6,000 students go and apply in these different areas. So the recognitions that these students have achieved is huge. So first, Harris County is Troop 6575, and we were, for the fifth year in a row, recognized as a Gold Level Troop, which is something that we have to work all year to attain. So that is huge. We're one of the few schools that get that recognition. Then, it's such a huge event, we have an opening and closing production. Students who are selected for it have to audition for hunt, with hundreds of other students. Gavin Ricosi, Senior Gavin Ricosi, was cast in the opening number and was also a featured soloist. That is a huge, huge deal. We then have something that used to be called IEs, and they changed it to Thespies. We don't really like that term, but that's their individual events. So in the Thespies, in the IEs, you can go in performing categories, you can go in technical categories. Well, it's a rigorous process because the students have to audition via video. And then, once they are selected, they get to perform for another set of judges in person. So the highest ranking that you can receive is Superior. So we had three students to achieve Superior rating, which again is the highest that they can receive. It also qualifies them for the International Festival. So two seniors who could not be here this evening. Dextrius Williams received a Superior in Theater Marketing. He designed marketing for a show that had not been produced. So everything from the ground up. Lindsay Morgan, Senior Lindsay Morgan, received a Superior in Solo Dance. So she choreographed her own piece. And then Junior Rayleigh Spurlock received a Superior in Solo Performance. So these are huge accomplishments that these students achieved, and we thank you guys all the time for the support that you give us in the fine arts. So thank you. In keeping with the fine arts tradition, Ms. Pamela Pope.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So I had, I couldn't find you anyway, but I found you and here you are. I want to thank you so much for your support over the years. This will be the last time I get to address you all. So thank you again for supporting the fine arts. And I wanted to mention our All-State Chorus members. Asia Trippett, who is not able to be here tonight. She is one of our All-State Chorus members. And just to put another fine point on Tammy's introduction of Asia, she's going in Voice, and she is, I've lost count, but probably the sixth or seventh student that we've had from Harris County make Governor's Honors in Voice. As a matter of fact, you hired one to take my place, Mr. Bray. So I am super excited that he's going to be here and hopefully continue that tradition. So the ladies before you are both sophomores. Ally Gray, I was going to call them by their nicknames. Okay, Ally Gray Iverson. And Carly P. Grubbs. Anyway, but so they're both sophomores, and we went with Asia and another junior, Elena Mahia, to Allstate this year. They have to pass a very rigorous audition. They have to prepare solo, they have to do all this by themselves. And then they go to another panel where they sight-read music they've never seen before, under a 30-second time limit, and it's either right or it's wrong. There is no, oh, that was really pretty. No, it's either right or it's wrong. So they were able to forge through that. And then, in January, they had to prepare their whole packet of music. They're given the music, they're given recordings. Well, they were both selected for the Advanced Senior Treble Choir. So it was all women, and their music was the hardest perhaps that we've ever seen. And so they, was it two pieces or just the one? Yeah, it was, it went on and on and on and on. It had thousands of notes, actually had thousands of notes. And so they're like, um, we don't think we can, we don't have time for that one. So just make sure you know it. I'm super, super proud of them, and we had a little downtime today. And so they all went to the music library and they're like, let's go sing our Allstate music. And they like to relive those moments. So thank you again for the bus that takes them to their auditions and then supporting the time that they're away from their classes and just in general, your support throughout the years for our awesome student musicians. So thank you again.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tyler Dunn, CTA Director, and I'm going to present to you some students who have competed in our state competitions, some of who are advancing to national competitions. We've got middle school students, we've got high school students. You'll just see the common thread here and theme that, that our students are starting off early. They're taking the things that they're learning in classrooms. They're extending beyond the classroom. They're applying them in real and relevant opportunities. One of the things that excites me most about it is they're competitive with it. First group we're going to hear from are our Cyber Patriots and Girls Who Code. We've got the sponsor for Cyber Patriots, Mr. Chris Lovelock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Christopher Lovelock. I teach the Cyber Security Pathway at Harris County High School Science and Technology Center. I'm also the sponsor, coach, and mentor for our Cyber Patriots program. So it's my honor to introduce you, one of our bright young lady students that is a dual pathway completer for computer science. She's finished both the programming pathway and the cybersecurity pathway. She's also a leader in our Cyber Patriot program. She's a leader in our Girls Who Code program, and she's president of the National Technology Honor Society here at Harris County High School. So I'd like to introduce you to Madeline White.
Good evening. So I am here as a representative of Cyber Patriots. Cyber Patriots is part of the United States Air Force Association's National Youth Cyber Education Program. And this was created to inspire K through 12 students to seek careers in cybersecurity, but also those who want to seek careers in other STEM fields as these are critical to our nation's future. So Cyber Patriots puts teams of high school students in the position of a newly hired IT professional, and they are tasked with managing the network of a small company. So through a series of online competition rounds, we are given a set of virtual operating systems. And we are therefore tasked in finding and fixing the cybersecurity vulnerabilities that are all in these operating systems, and we need to also maintain critical services. So this year marked the fifth year of the participation in the Cyber Patriot program by Harris County High School. Every year, our program has grown and improved. We have continued this trend in the 2023 competition. And with, we had 22 students competing on four teams, and all of which earned, all of which earned the designation of Gold Tier status. And our top team even reached Platinum status. And there were over 5,600 teams competing this year all over North America. And all four Harris County teams finished in the top 25%, and our Platinum team ended up in the top 5%. I am also the leader of Girls Who Code, as Mr. Lovelock said. And Girls Who Code is our other STEM organization at Harris County High School. We work to inspire the young women of Harris County High School to pursue careers in technology and computer science by teaching basic computer science skills. So this year, we have continued to see our club grow. You know, three years ago, the club had just started and we had four members. This year, we had 12. And together, we have competed in robot obstacle courses. We have AI art competitions. We've created art using different coding languages. And we also just complete other many projects. And we are also excited to announce that we have partnered with Synovus's Women in Technology Program. And we have loved having their mentorship now and in the future. And we have lots of big plans for the next year, and we are extremely excited to see what is to come. Thank you.
In their competitions, you know, if we go to a basketball game or a football game, or our interior quarterbacks, you know, a full court press defense, but you watch the Cyber Patriots competition go on, and you will be humbled. Next, we've got Ms. Ashley Daniel coming to us from Harris County Carver Middle School with her FBLA students.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ashley Daniel, and I am the FBLA advisor at Harris County Carver Middle School. I stand, excuse me, I stand here representing the 35 members that we have in our active chapter. We've had an incredible year. We've traveled across the state of Georgia, conducted community service, including a canned food drive with Focus, and even making meals for families at the Ronda McDonald House. We've had guest speakers come and speak to us, including Representative Vance Smith, Waverly Hall Mayor Michael Harris, local entrepreneurs, business people from local corporations. And we're actually ranked number five in the state for chapter of the year. For our competition season, our students really hit it out of the park this year. We had 10 top 10 finishes at state. However, I do want to highlight our top three here today. Cameron and Grace, they received first place in the Critical Thinking category. What they had to do was actually receive a real-life business case, analyze it in 10 minutes, and come up with recommendations. They then had to present that to live judges. And with their win, they'll actually represent the state of Georgia at Nationals this summer. Congratulations. Next, we have Kell and Ally, neither one of them could be here today unfortunately, but they competed in the Membership Recruitment Display category. They worked for weeks creating a brand-new marketing display from scratch that included photos, information, and even real-life medals on their display. We ended up getting second place in the state of Georgia for that. Lastly, we have Rachel. Rachel competed in Running an Effective Meeting category. She had to study parliamentary procedures, writing agendas, time management, and more. The test had 40 to 50 questions on there, and she got third in the state of Georgia. We want to thank the Board of Education, our administrative team at Harris County Carver, and our parents for being so supportive this year. Thank you.
So at this time, I have a resolution that we will read. Whereas the Harris County Carver Middle School Future Business Leaders of America team competed in a state leadership conference, whereas this competition consisted of middle school Future Business Leaders of America teams from all over the state, and whereas the following students won top three in their respective categories of the state competitions. First place, Cameron Atkins and Grace Wilkinson, Critical Thinking. Second place, Membership Recruitment Display, Kail Belford and Ally Maticka. Third place, Running an Effective Meeting, Rachel Figel. Whereas these victories bring great pride and recognition to the entire Harris County School District, be it furthermore resolved that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education meeting adopted this date, May 11th, 2023, by the Harris County Board of Education.
Now we have Harris County Carver Middle School TSA, Ms. Kim Acosta. She's had a great, obviously a great representation here. She's done a great job with our students, both in the middle school and as they're coming up to the high school. She's built great relationships with parents, has great parental support from all these students. Ms. Kim Acosta.
So these students have been working all year on their TSA projects. They have spent hundreds of hours working on their events. Harris County is well-known around the state for TSA. If you talk to people around the state and you mention Harris County, they know how well we do at TSA state conferences. Our students always get compliments on how well-spoken they are and how well they perform under pressure. These are the same students who are on math team, academic bowl, and taking advanced classes. They do wrestling, soccer, basketball, theater, band, as well as many other activities within the school and outside of school. We had 10 students who went to the National TSA Conference in Dallas last June and 10 who were going to Louisville this June to compete in the National TSA Conference. Georgia TSA had almost 3,000 in attendance at the state conference and almost 6,000 at the national conference. That includes middle school and high school students. Thank you for supporting TSA students. Their parents will tell you how much TSA has impacted their children's lives in a positive way. Thank you.
So I also have a proclamation I will read for you. Whereas the Harris County Carver Middle School Technology Student Association competed in a state leadership conference competition recently, and whereas this competition consisted of middle school, of Middle Technology Student Association from all over the state, and whereas Harris County Carver Middle School won third place overall, chapter in the state, and whereas the following students won first place in their respective categories. Chapter Team, Reagan Gardner, Spencer Bowden, Parker Cummings, Libby Ricker, Paige Timmons, Addison White. Forensic Technology, Libby Ricker, Paige Timmons. Prepared Speech, Addison White. System Control Technology, Shabam Rao, Scott Schumatz, Nicholas McAllister. Whereas the following students won second place in their respective categories. Bio-technology, Reagan Gardner, Libby Ricker, Daniel Ruiz Hernandez. Outstanding Student, Spencer Bowden. Whereas the following students won third place in their respective categories. Community Service Video, Spencer Bowden, Parker Cummings, Addison White, Landon Layfield. Inventions and Innovations, Brandon Smith, Nolan Market, Von Nguyen, sorry, Grace Lynn Wilkinson. Mass Production, Reagan Gardner, Spencer Bowden, Landon Layfield, Isaiah Willis. Mechanical Engineering, Addison White, Nicholas McAllister. Microcontroller Design, Spencer Bowden, Parker Cummings, Damian Schaefer, Isaiah Willis. Outstanding Middle School Chapter, Reagan Gardner, Spencer Bowden, Parker Cummings, Libby Ricker, Paige Timmons, Addison White, Shabam Rao, Scott Schumatz, Nicholas McAllister, Daniel Ruiz Hernandez, Landon Layfield, Brandon Smith, Nolan Market, Von Nguyen, Grace Lynn Wilkinson, Isaiah Willis, Damian Schaefer, Mason Thomas, Adely Smith, Ansley Christmas. Whereas the following students were finalists in the TSA National Conference. First place, Community Service Video, Spencer Bowden, Addison White. Third place, Bio-technology, Libby Ricker, Paige Timmons, Emma Shine, Landon Layfield. Fifth place, Promotional Marketing, Addison White. Seventh place, Chapter Team, Riley Market, Emma Shine, Addison White, Spencer Bowden, Katie Hamilton, Libby Ricker. Eighth place, Medical Technology, Emma Shine, Riley Market, Landon Layfield. Tenth place, Microcontroller Design, Spencer Bowden, Isaiah Willis. Tenth place, Off-the-Grid, Katie Hamilton, Landon Layfield, Riley Market. Tenth place, Video Game Design, Spencer Bowden, Isaiah Willis. Whereas these victories bring great pride and recognition to the Harris County School District, be it furthermore resolved that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education meeting. Congratulations.
Next, we'll move to the high school CTSO organization, or CTSOs. We've got Ms. Deb Hughes representing Future Business Leaders of America.
And I'm bringing with me a familiar face from a little while ago. We have Rayleigh Spurlock here to my left. I'm very proud to be the co-sponsor of FBLA with, along with Ashley Hubbard. And this year, we went to regional competition, and we had five people placed in the top three in regional competition. We had nine people placed overall in the top 10 in regional competition. And they all went to state. We had a lot of people competing state this year. Super proud of everybody. And one of our regional winners with a perfect regional score, perfect score, period, in public speaking, one of the most competitive, if not the most competitive event in Georgia, really FBLA at all, is Rayleigh Spurlock. She went on then to win the state championship in public speaking and is going to proudly represent us at the end of June in Nationals in Atlanta. Given that there are three big states in FBLA, Georgia's one of the biggest, and if she could win the Georgia competition, our chances are really good to bring home a national title. No matter what happens, we're super proud of her. I'm super proud of all the people who competed for Georgia, or Georgia FBLA, for Harris County High School. And again, I'm proud to be a part of the whole program.
All right, so I have a resolution for you as well. Whereas the Harris County High School Future Business Leaders of America competed in the State Leadership Conference competition recently, and whereas this competition consisted of Future Business Leaders of America chapters from all over the state, and whereas Rayleigh Spurlock won first place in public speaking, and whereas this victory brings great pride and recognition to the entire Harris County School District, be it furthermore resolved that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education meeting adopted this date, May 11th, 2023, by the Harris County Board of Education.
Thank you. And now we have Mr. Kenneth Thomas representing Skills U.S.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? I am the graphic arts teacher here at Harris County High School. All right, bye, Mr. Couch. Thank you so much. I am also an advisor for Skills USA. I've been so for 13 years, and I'm very, very, very proud of these students that I have with me today, as well as some that couldn't make it. We had 17 students competing our regional competition this year. We then did even better. We had 19 competed our state competition. And we've had a lot of turnover in our department for our skills competition. But these kids have persevered. They have come after school. They have donated their own time and effort to. They have donated their own time and effort to master several different areas of study. And I just want to recognize the ones we have here and then of course you have a listing of all the ones that are beyond that. We have with us today Ethan Witt, who competed in masonry. All right, we have Michael Thomas, who looks a little bit like me, who competed in pen design. We have Joey Gibbs, who competed in plumbing. We have Isabella Rachel, who is our competitor in screen printing technology. And tonight we have with us Grace McMillan, who tends to represent, who's going to represent our transition into our new year, one of the most enthusiastic young ladies I've ever seen. She's come to me every day with new ideas for next year and things that we're going to do. So I'm very proud of them and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them today with you all. Thank you.
So I have a resolution I will read for you. Whereas the Harris County High School Skills USA organization competed at the Regional and State Skills USA Conference recently, and whereas this competition consisted of Skills USA organizations from all over the region and state, and whereas Isabella Rachel won second place in screen printing technology in the State Skills USA competition, and whereas Joey Gibbs won second place in plumbing in the State Skills USA competition, and whereas Samara Knighton won first place in sheet metal in State Skills USA competition, and whereas Ethan Witt won third place in masonry in the Region Skills USA competition, and whereas Michael Alexic Jr. won third place in automotive service technology in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Mary Rawer won second place in electrical construction wiring in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Grace Gilbert won second place in first aid CPR in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Joey Gibbs won second place in plumbing in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Joseph Jacklet won second place in extemporaneous speaking in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Duncan Johnson won first place in job skill demonstration open in the Regional Skills USA competition, and whereas Michael Thomas won first place in pen design in Regional Skills USA competition. Whereas these victories bring great pride and recognition to the entire Harris County School District. Be it furthermore resolved, that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education meeting, adopted this date, May 11th, 2023, by the Harris County Board of Education. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Great job, sir.
Now we have Ms. Katie Sazmore from our high school TSA Association.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Katie Sazmore. I teach computer science at Harris County STC and I just want to thank you for a moment and say I know that bus shortages and some, they're no joke, they're not easy to find, but we appreciate you working with us and our groups to change students' lives like we have today. We recently went to state competition and had some students compete and these students placed in the top three for our state. In second place, we had our animatronics team Kate Jackson, Carson Markert, and then Caitlin Frank, she was unable to attend. And then we had Sarah McAllister placed third in dragster. And all of our students have worked very hard and have come after school. I mean, we spent several hours on Wednesday afternoons, many a Wednesday afternoons, working on our projects and they've done a fantastic job to represent Harris County and TSA.
So whereas the Harris County High School Technology Student Association competed in a state leadership conference competition recently, and whereas this competition consisted of technology student associations from all over the state, and whereas Kate Jackson, Caitlin Frank, and Carson Market won second place in animatronics, and whereas Sarah McAllister won third place in dragster design, and whereas these victories bring great pride and recognition to the entire Harris County School District, be it furthermore resolved, that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education, adopted this date, May 11th, 2023, by the Harris County Board of Education. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next we have Ms. Boykin and Ms. Kelly with our healthcare students and the HOSA organization.
Good evening. Thank y'all for allowing us to be here to represent HOSA and our amazing students and thank you for all the support that you give, George, HOSA, Harris County HOSA. All right, HOSA is an organization that is exclusively for healthcare students. This year we have had a very busy year. We have over 100 members in HOSA this year. We've been very active. Every leadership conference that HOSA has provided, our students have been a part of. So we have traveled quite a bit this year. We've done lots of community service. We competed at the fall rally. We have a student that placed second at fall rally. She was unable to be here tonight. In t-shirt design, and we had a very nice t-shirt. I think every time we went to a conference and we had our shirt on, they were like, I can't believe y'all didn't win. And we were like, we couldn't either. But Fall Leadership Conference, we had students that represented Harris County. At state qualification, we had 25 students that competed for qualification. We had 15 that moved on to the next round, so they went to state leadership. Of the 25 that went to state leadership, out of over 5,000 students across the state of Georgia competing, we had 15 that qualified, moved on to state leadership. Of those students at state leadership, we had six that placed in the top five, excuse me, in the top 10. Three of the, well, excuse me, six moved on to second round. And of those six, we had three that placed in the top 10. You're looking at two of the young ladies that placed in the top 10, and I'm sure that you see these two young ladies frequently at your board meetings because I think they are a part of everything that Harris County High School represents. But we have Casey and Jayla and we are very proud of them. They have been models of what Harris County High School HOSA should be and hopefully they have moved some of that on. They've been good mentors for the younger students so that we can continue to have a strong program. I spoke to you a little bit about HOSA. Ms. Kelly's going to speak to you about something else. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Kelly. I co-teach with Ms. Boykin and we co-advice the HOSA group and it's my pleasure to continue celebrating these two young ladies. Unbeknownst to them, they have two awards that they have achieved, so it's my pleasure to get to give those to them tonight. Three Rivers AHEC, the Area Health Education Center, is located in Columbus. They open up every year to our senior HOSA members in our community. So all of the surrounding counties, including Harris County, Muskogee, Tru, Meriwether, Helton, what other?
Palbert, Meriwether, Tru.
Chatco, Chatco's the one I'm forgetting. So all of those surrounding counties, any senior that is active in HOSA can participate in this scholarship and Harris County shines every year. This year they awarded six scholarships and Harris County seniors, we got four, we were awarded four of the six and these two young ladies got first and second place. So it is my pleasure to award these to them. So it is Chart the Course Healthcare, excuse me, Health Careers Academy Certificate of Scholarship. The first one, first place is to Jayla Moss. She successfully completed the requirements for the 2022-23 Chart the Course Health Careers Academy and she was awarded the Academy Apex Award in the amount of $1,000. And then second place, Chart the Course Health Careers Academy Certificate of Scholarship, Casey Curry has successfully completed the requirements for the 2022-23 Chart the Course Health Careers Academy and she was awarded the prestigious award in the amount of $750. So congratulations. Proud of these girls and again, they have represented us in every area this year and we're just super proud of them. We're going to miss them and have a hard time replacing them next year. Thank you.
Well, I'll read the resolution, but I actually knew about it because you're on here already. Whereas the Harris County High School HOSA, Future Healthcare Professionals competed in a HOSA State Leadership Conference in March of 2023, and whereas this competition consisted of HOSA Career Technical School Organizations from all over the state of Georgia, and whereas the team of Casey Curry and Jayla Moss placed seventh in career health display in the HOSA State Competition, and whereas Three Rivers Area Health Education Center granted Jayla Moss with the 2023 Academy Apex Award, Chart the Course Scholarship, amount of $1,000, and whereas Three Rivers Area Health Education Center granted Casey Curry with the 2023 Prestigious Award, Chart the Course Scholarship, amount of $750. And whereas these victories and awards bring great pride and recognition to the entire Harris County School District, be it furthermore resolved, that this resolution will be spread upon the permanent minutes of the May 11th, 2023 Harris County Board of Education meeting, adopted this date, May 11th, 2023, by the Harris County Board of Education. Congratulations.
You come on too, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, ladies. Please display that. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, so that will take us to the public participation portion of our meeting. As I don't see anyone else in the audience, Mr. Couch, did we have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
No, and no one's made any indication they'd be interested.
All right. So that will take us to item F, that the Harris County Board of Education review the attached meeting minutes from the board meetings held in April of 2023. I trust everyone has reviewed those. I'll entertain a motion that we approve those minutes. Mr. Lipp, second. Dr. Sparks, any discussion? All in favor? That will take us to item G1, that the Harris County Board of Education review the first draft of the FY 2024 tentative budget as presented. Mr. Couch.
You should have in your packet of information some highlights. There are a couple of things I'd like to point out. Of course, when this is posted on the website, some of our personnel may be interested in looking at it. First, do you have any questions related to anything you see? You haven't had long enough to look over it, I'm sure.
G1.
I'll go ahead and read some of it and then you may want to look over it. For the budget highlights, this includes a $2,000 increase for all certified personnel. It also brings starting pay for bus drivers to $21 per hour and moves all bus driver pay scales up based on this new starting rate. It gives all other non-certified classified personnel a 3% raise. It retains 11 CARES positions out of the original 23 that we had in learning law. It includes additional support staff for MTSS coaches and Harris County High School 504 plans. It also moved 400,000 requested by MNO expenses to squads. However, if the fund equity, if we continue to have the kind of year that we're having and there's a larger anticipated fund equity because the fund's not spent in transportation or maintenance and operations, we may be able to adjust that and take it out of there. This is for the camera system. Other notes, based on the governor's approved 24 budget. This is where it's not really complicated, but it may be something, it may be complicated for you, so we might need to discuss it. Even with the 5% pay increase approved by the FY 2024 Governor's Budget, the starting minimum pay for Harris County schools, district nutrition staff, and bus driver exceeds the state minimum rate. The other, and it's complicated, so pay attention. We pay them far above the 5% increase recommended by the governor. But for nutrition, the 5% increase approved by the governor is on the state salary supplement funding only, it's under QBE. The state salary supplement helps to offset part of the school nutrition salary cost. Now this is something I didn't know and you didn't either, so here we go. Typically, that money, the state salary supplement for nutrition, supports approximately two days worth of salaries per month for each school nutrition staff member outside of the central office. Okay, for bus drivers, with the increase of $21 an hour starting pay that the superintendent is recommending for the 2023-24 school year, Harris County pays 53% or $7.67 above the state required minimum, which is $10,395.35 annually or $14.43 per hour. In other words, with both nutrition and the bus drivers, you as a school system over the years fund more than any increase that they were doing to the state minimum. They're well above 5%, but they'll be getting that 3% increase, which continues to take them above the state minimum. If you have any questions, you can always ask me. But I think that that's fairly understandable. I mean, if you're looking over the, where we are with the QBE allotment, the property taxes that, remember the millage rate was not increased, it's actually decreased, the TAVT taxes, all that. We are very fortunate in that the QBE allotment was funded at the full level. That's something the governor has done in these last couple of years, first time it's been done since I was scared to under Governor Dean. Long time, long time. Absolutely. But it looks good and we've got a lot of things working in the school system to benefit the educational process of students and their learning and I'm really proud of what y'all have been, what we've all accomplished, but what y'all have done is incredible.
Any questions? Or discussion?
We can always address it later because we're going to have numerous meetings on this.
All right. So that will take us to item H1, that the Harris County Board of Education review the attached proposed revision request to board policy JGC Student Health Services. Mr. Couch.
And you've had this now for a week and it'll be on the table for 30 days. Ms. Baker's here if you have any individual questions. It's not necessarily complicated, but it is very involved. Ms. Baker, you want to come on up?
I don't necessarily have a real long conversation or question. I did review it and I appreciate the work put into it, it's quite detailed. I did have a question though, as far as the review from the legalista perspective. Mr. Allen, if you had a chance to review this policy and I suppose you And I suppose you've had some input to the creation as well. Would you, would you please do so? Thank you so much.
All righty. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Got your steps in. Thank you.
Any, wait, before she leaves, any other questions for Ms. Baker regarding this?
I do appreciate the work you put into this.
Yes, it's fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Very well done.
I'm sure you'll do a good job thinking of it, too.
All right, so as Mr. Couch stated, this will sit on the books for 30 days. We will vote on it on the regular meeting in June. So if you have any other questions or anything, please get with Ms. Baker or any, or if Mr. Ellington finds something, he will definitely get with Ms. Baker or Mr. Couch as well. All right, so that will take us to item H2, that the Harris County Board of Education review the below out-of-state field trip request for the Harris County High School wrestling team. Mr. Couch reviewed this with us last year. This is a trip that that group takes every year. Did anyone have any questions before we call the vote on that? All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the, the wrestling field trip to Lander University in South Carolina. Mr. Goodno, second. Mr. Green, any discussion? All in favor? So move. All right, so that will take us, well, actually, were all of these items, one through seven, in the consent agenda before? No?
I think we were missing one. It seems like we were missing one.
Was it the CARES ESR report?
I think it was.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion that we approve items I1, the enrollment report, I2, major purchases report, I3, the financial report, I4, the school nutrition report, I5, the quarterly reports from operations, and the school meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Mr. Lipp, second. And Mr. Proctor, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And follow-up from last week. And, you know what? He's not here. Mr. Couch, were you able to get any information about the antenna on the water tank? What that reference was for?
Uh, you know, I forgot all about it. If you'd seen me in a manner, I'd be more than happy to ask.
Glad to. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? All right, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, so that will take us to item I7.
Let me ask a question at this point. Do we need to adjust the agenda to move that from consent to action to the ESR? Should. I think so. Okay. Need to adjust the agenda and move that.
So we need to move item I7 to item H3. Is that correct? All right, so.
Got a vote on that.
I need a motion from the floor to move the CARES ARPS ESR report to item H3 on the action agenda. Mr. Goodno, second. Mr. Proctor, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
Why are we moving it?
So we can approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Because it was not reviewed last week.
Got it. Thank you so much.
All right, so I need, all in favor? All right, so at this time, we will, it's been moved to item H3. We will go back to item H3, that the Harris County Board of Education review the attached CARES ARPS ESR report for April of 2023.
If I can, let me make a comment on it. You'll see that there's $833,000, and that's money primarily allotted to pay the people that have been employed throughout the year through the month of June, paying salaries. But there'll be somewhere around $100,000 left, and that will be spent on summer school this month of June. So you're going to hear people across the state say, we need to get this money, this unspent money back. They're going to have a hard time getting it from us.
I understand.
Thanks for joining us.
No, I, I agree. Sound management and use of it in the correct areas. Learning loss and all of our extra staff we brought on to support learning loss. All right, so at that, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve item H3. Mr. Proctor, second. Mr. Green, any discussion? All in favor? All right, so that will take us to item J, that the Harris County Board of Education share comments, news, and information they might have with the public and the other members of the board. This evening, I will start with Dr. Sparks.
Good evening. I had an opportunity to attend the regional and state track meet that has started today. We have some athletes competing, so we wish them well, and I'm looking forward to graduation this Saturday. That's all.
Mr. Ellington?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Goodno?
Good evening. I was not here last week, so I'm not sure what comments were made, but I want to make a comment in regards to our evening with the stars. It's always an enjoyable evening, seeing everyone there and the awards that everyone achieves. And I hate to see all the retirees that are leaving and all. Also, too, I, I think we were remiss a while back, Mr. Proctor, myself attended the attendance meeting. And that's always interesting to see the judges and everyone there and the information that we get from all the individuals at the schools and the counselors and all with, with that. Like I said, Harris County does extremely well in regards to the surrounding counties in regards to our attendance and all, which I think is, is great. Like I say, we think the shotgun team did well in regards to their competition the other weekend, and like I say, I think tracks went to taking several members of state. And, you know, I think we had 13, 14 people signing this week, which I think was the largest in Harris County history for athletics and all, so, but other than that, and I'd want to thank all the staff and everyone for their input into the budget. And Mr. Couch and your staff and how well they did, and especially with our CARES money and how we used it totally and appropriately. But other than that, that's it.
I just want to say congratulations to all the students that we recognized tonight. Also, congratulations to all the seniors who will be graduating on Saturday. It is a significant milestone in your life, and I want to pass along my congratulations.
So yes, I'd like to also say congratulations to all the students that we did recognize tonight for all their hard efforts during the past school year. And I know we won't be meeting again before school ends, so I do want to wish everybody a happy summer vacation and enjoy their time off and get some R and R, and we'll be back out again before we know it. So, I mean, I hope y'all to all have a great summer break. And then also want to wish all of our seniors a, a happy summer and as they get ready to go on their new endeavors and their new, and their lives as they move forward.
I want to echo what everyone else has already said, and I think we would be remiss to not say congratulations to all of the students we saw this week and last week for their accomplishments, both the athletes and the academic. And seniors, you've done, and I guess you've got a little bit ahead of you, but you choose wisely and enjoy yourself.
I came over to the auditorium this morning and watched the seniors taking care of business, preparing their organization for, for the graduation ceremony that'll occur at Civic Center. Breakfast will be served. You know how the directions are going on Lumpkin Road, I believe is the best entrance, and we'll see you there. Graduation starts at nine, so probably want to be there around 8:30 or more earlier. Also, I wanted to remind you that on May 25th, we've done a lot of stuff in preparation for the alumni, Carver Alumni Association, working with them to set up the historical marker. It's ready to go. We've got most of the details worked out. I, I hope we have a really large crowd. And we've made some adjustments. If, if, if it's a nice day, temperature-wise, and no rain, we'll be outside. But if it, if it gets really hot or it doesn't look right, we'll, you know, the weather may not be, maybe threatening, we'll move to the inside. But I, I'd really like for you to be there if you get an opportunity to come. It should be a historical event, to say the least. Look forward to being with us. Thank you.
So, ditto to everything that everyone said tonight. Congratulations again to all of our student athletes that were recognized at last week's meeting and our students that were recognized tonight. If you didn't know it, they're doing great things up here at the middle school and the high school with these groups and our student athletes. So congratulations to everyone that had any involvement in any of those programs, with our athletes, all our coaches, all our teachers and staff members that volunteer their extra time for all these clubs and these extra events and these weekend tournaments and competitions. Thank you for your time away from your families, for doing that for our students in Harris County. It does not go unnoticed ever. Also, I look forward to graduation on Saturday. I trust everybody will be in, in good spirits. Let's not celebrate too much. Remember, everyone wants to hear their child's name announced, so save your applause to the end, if you would. You will be reminded of that, but please do so. Be respectful. You know, we're all one big family in Harris County, and everybody wants to hear their students' name called, that great accomplishment of graduating from high school. So at this time, I will entertain a motion that we move to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, to consider a matter involving the disclosure of personally identifiable information from students' educational record. Do I have a motion? Mr. Green, second. Mr. Proctor, any discussion? All in favor? We will be excused to executive session.